Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled school board meeting for District 196. It is Monday, February 8th, 2021, and welcome. We are virtual, or we are live and not virtual this evening, and we are at Dakota Ridge School. I'll have a call to order this evening, and before we take attendance, would you rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence this evening. We're asking for a moment of silence for Richard Lee Moore III, Matthias Wall, both students in early childhood education, and Hunter Carlson, a junior at Eagan High School families. Thank you on behalf of the District 196 family. We'll keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Good evening. Before we start, we'll do attendance, and before we move forward, respond at the roll when Kelly calls your name.
Ingrahamson?
Here.
Alfred? Going to join us virtually later. Coulson? Isaacs?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Magnusson?
Here.
Rosie?
Here.
Art and Joel are going to be with us virtually, and we'll watch for Joel to be here. He was on and dropped off, so he will be coming back. With that, we'll move ahead with approval of the agenda this evening. There are no additions or deletions as your agenda is outlined in front of you, so with that, I'll ask for a motion and a second by the board.
Sutchen moves to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Sutchen, a second by Craig to approve the agenda as outlined. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and Kelly will take your name at the roll.
Ingrahamson?
Aye.
Coulson? Isaacs?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Magnusson?
Aye.
And Rosie.
Aye.
Thank you. Right now, that passes on a six-zero vote. This evening, we are going to move into recognitions, and we have recognitions of the 2000-2001 state champion in the Lincoln-Douglas Debate. We are going to call up Chris McDonald, who is going to present our Lincoln-Douglas Debate winner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And I'm hoping it's 2021 and not 2000-2001.
Oh, yeah, well.
I think Jackie's hoping that the COVID has gone away and we've gone backwards in time. First, I'll start and tell you just how privileged you are this evening. Not only do you get to start this meeting listening to me, but according to the agenda, you pretty much get to end the meeting listening to me some more later.
There you go.
So there you go. All right. My name is Chris McDonald, and I am the debate coach at Eagan High School, and by the end of this evening, you're going to know that really well. I am here to introduce and for us to celebrate the accomplishment of Arush Iyer, who's a senior at Eagan High School, who this year won the state title in Lincoln-Douglas Debate. Debate is one of those activities that teaches students how to think critically, how to think on their feet, and how to analyze and synthesize evidence, all of the things that we believe in, in terms of higher learning aspects. And Arush is one of those students who just works incredibly hard, but he'll tell you it wasn't always easy, and that there were times where he really had some self-doubt. So we had these chats that the kids on the team euphemistically refer to as "dub chats," which that's my nickname. And so they call them that because it's when I take the time to sort of get them to get a different perspective, when maybe they're not necessarily succeeding as well as they think they should be succeeding, or the arguments aren't coming together as well as they think that they should be coming together. But Arush, he's persevered, and this year, not only did he qualify for the state tournament and win the state title, but he's also qualified to debate at the National Tournament of Champions in April, as well as the National Tournament this summer. That will be all virtual and online, but should have been in lovely Des Moines, but we won't be going to lovely Des Moines in June. We'll be doing that online. That might be okay. So, so Arush puts a lot of time and effort. The National Speech and Debate Association awarded him with the Academic All-American this year as one of our top students throughout the country, and it is my privilege to introduce and to thank you for your support in allowing us to do these activities so that students like Arush can in fact excel at something that interests them a great deal. Your 2021 Minnesota State High School League state champion in Lincoln-Douglas Debate, Arush Iyer.
Arush, do you mind if I ask you a question? How different was it doing it on Zoom than doing it live?
It was very different, because usually, you know, when you're like doing it live in a classroom, you don't expect to get hit in the head with a football by your little brother, but that is, that is something that could happen in like an online debate setting. But, so yeah, it was, it was a little weird. It was a little hard, it was a little hard to adapt, but you know, once, once, once you really, once I really was able to adapt, it was definitely a lot of fun.
Wonderful. Well, congratulations. We are so happy and so honored to be able to thank you and congratulate you tonight. Way to go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next, we're going to call up Polly Reikowski from Eagan High School, and she is going to introduce our Speech and Debate Hall of Fame coach.
So we're keeping Mr. McDonald really close.
I think we should keep him right there.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the school board, Superintendent Krieger, and everyone else in attendance, either here or virtually. I am honored to be with you tonight to bring to a recognition status Mr. Christopher McDonald, Eagan High School Debate and Speech Coach, for his selection into the prestigious National Speech and Debate Association Hall of Fame for the year 2020. This is an amazing recognition on a national level of the best of the best. No more than five individuals in debate and speech programs across the nation are inducted into the Hall of Fame each June. This year, it was a virtual ceremony instead of in person, but nonetheless significant and viewed nationwide and celebrated widely, even with a parade past Mr. McDonald's house in St. Paul.
Oh, fun.
Chris McDonald has been the head debate coach and assistant speech coach at Eagan High School since 2002. He has devoted his efforts to our students, families, and the debate and speech programs in our school, all Minnesota schools, and across the nation with the NSDA. He not only coaches, but leads many committees, has served on the Board of Directors for the Minnesota State High School League and the National Speech and Debate Board of Directors. He hosts a large number of tournaments, works in tab rooms each weekend all year long, and keeps programs going all over the country with his support. He has had many success stories of state and national championships over these years, including Arush this year and many others. However, he would always say the significance of what he does with students is about empowering them to find their voice in this world and travel their journey to success in a number of career paths, even to the White House as a COVID policy advisor recently. One of our graduates who worked in speech and debate is back at the White House. Chris has been named Minnesota Coach of the Year in both speech and debate organizations. He has earned the James Graupner Distinguished Service Award from the Minnesota Debate Teachers Association. He has earned this Hall of Fame appointment as he joins the ranks of the best and most devoted coaches across the past three decades and into the future. We congratulate him and ask that you do so as well. We are very proud of him as a member of our professional group in District 196 and as a friend and mentor. Congratulations, Christopher. Welcome to the Hall of Fame.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You know, you get to hear from me more later about all of this stuff.
All right, all right. We'll leave it at that. Congratulations.
But thank you.
Well done. Amazing. Next on the agenda this evening is the superintendent's recognition of students and staff. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
And as a great follow-up to recognizing our incredible staff, I have several students as well. Congratulations to the eight District 196 juniors who have been nominated for this year's Excellence in Community Education and Leadership, Excel Awards sponsored by the Minnesota State High School League. The awards recognize high school juniors who are active in fine arts and athletic activities, who demonstrate leadership qualities and who are model citizens in their community. The Excel Award nominees from District 196 are Sarah McDivitt and Ryan Cardella of Apple Valley High School, Catherine Wong and Arlen Hagen Barth of Eagan High School, Rhea Rajrunch and Hunter Dunn of Eastview High School, and Emma Duksersher and Matthew Condon of Rosemont High School. And congratulations to Shannon Park Elementary School music teacher Kathleen Redspinner on being selected the Elementary Music Educator of the Year by the Minnesota Music Educators Association. We will learn more about Kathleen and officially recognize her at our next regular school board meeting on March 8th. Congratulations to the eight District 196 seniors who have been nominated for the 2021 Academics Arts and Athletics Awards from the High School League. The AAA goes to nominated seniors with the 3-point or higher grade point average who participate in athletic and fine arts programs and exhibit exemplary citizenship and the highest standards of sportsmanship and conduct. The AAA award nominees from District 196 are Grace Lankas and Noah Fried of Apple Valley High School, Kai Wilson and Jacob Frost of Eagan High School, Miranda Current and Gabe Mullen of Eastview High School, and Sonya Ramish and Anders Robek of Rosemont High School. Next, I would like to recognize our incredible caring peer professionals in District 196. The last week in January was Peer Professionals Recognition Week in Minnesota. Peer professionals work directly with students on academics, behavior, functional, and social skills. They develop healthy, supportive relationships with our students and contribute to their success every day. Thank you to our peer professionals in District 196 for the important work you do in supporting our mission of educating students to reach their full potential. And last, but not least, I want to recognize our outstanding school board members in advance of School Board Recognition Week later this month. We are extremely fortunate to have incredibly knowledgeable, caring, and dedicated school members in District 196.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, school board members, and congratulations, everybody. Well done. Next on the agenda this evening is a special communication request. We have two people signed up. Under special communication requests, you can sign up five days before the meeting, and you are given five minutes of time to speak on a topic of your choice. Our first speaker this evening is Larry Jacobson. Good evening, Mr. Jacobson.
Hi. I want to thank you in advance for listening, because I believe you will, and I'm going to read through this in an attempt to rush through in five minutes. My topic is "Let Us Reason Together." What brought me here tonight was a communication that came from the superintendent's office. It was sent out the morning after the U.S. Capitol insurrection. For clarity, I will read the part that was confusing and troubling to me. Quote, "We witnessed white supremacy in action. This is not about politics. It's about systemic racism. It's about an affront to our democracy. The events are even more personal and hurtful for people of color." I thought to myself, what in the world are they talking about? What does race have to do with this? I was focusing on the estimated 50,000 mostly peaceful protesters who were there questioning whether we had a fair election. The news centered on a much smaller group, maybe a couple hundred, that were occupying the Capitol Building. I'm not condoning that behavior at all. I started doing a bit of research, and that's what brought me here tonight. We can do better for our children and our society. I have heard that some students are demanding safe spaces on campuses because they view it as a form of torture to be exposed to opposing viewpoints. I certainly hope that none of you believe that students should be indoctrinated instead of educated. I'm here tonight to call for more diversity in our school system. Do you see diversity in the classrooms? I'm not talking about shades of skin color, nationalities, or how many different languages are spoken. I'm talking about liberal versus conservative viewpoints. How many of you on the school board would consider yourselves conservative? How many of our teachers would call themselves conservative? Studies have shown that liberals vastly outnumber conservatives in teaching positions. I doubt 196 is an exception. One teacher told me, "None of my students know my political affiliation. I teach them facts, how to think critically." This teacher went on to say, "That's not the norm around here. Many proselytize." So I asked, "What can be done? How can conservative viewpoints be expressed so that students can make educated choices?" Are you aware of conservative viewpoints being silenced, ridiculed, and demeaned? Regarding the letter I referenced, I would encourage you not to use words like "white supremacy" and "systemic racism." Many blacks believe that using labels like these merely serve to stir up strife and turn back progress that has been made. I concur. Get some diversity into our classrooms from some conservative black people like Starr Parker, who wrote Uncle Sam's Plantation. Since I read her book, I have followed her on Center for Urban Renewal and Education, kear.org. It's a good resource. Candace Owens recently wrote the book Blackout. I just finished it. I learned through her video, which she made regarding George Floyd tragedy. Very interesting discussion. I was able to talk to an officer from the 3rd precinct who worked with Derek Chauvin. It was interesting to hear his viewpoint. The late Walter Williams, professor at George Mason University, wrote "American Contempt for Liberty," which is a compilation of various topics of interest from a black man's point of view. Thomas Sowell wrote "Intellectuals and Society." These are some examples of views which I believe are lacking in District 196. This is the kind of diversity that I believe is needed. How about community ed? What can we do in that arena to make diversity available?
We'll give you about a few seconds to finish on, Mr. Jacobson. Thank you. Sorry.
What can we do in that arena to make diversity available in terms of black conservative values? Maybe some free speech venues, and don't even charge tuition to capitalize on the free idea. It would, it might be a good investment of tax dollars to bring us more together as a community. Probably no time for it now, but I would love to hear some feedback in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your thoughts. Our next speaker this evening, our next speaker, our next speaker this evening, under open, or special communication request, is Pamela Cooler. And welcome, Pamela.
I'm here to share my concerns regarding a message sent to staff on January 7th. It began, quote, "We are progressing through a pandemic, renewing our commitment to equity after George Floyd's killing," unquote. Our students are being subjected to the topic of George Floyd's death. This topic has to do with math, science, English, geography, reading. In what way? His death was tragic, as are all deaths from the acts of bad players on both sides. Recall, he was in the progress of yet another crime and had an extensive rap sheet. Will that be taught? In addition to that, perhaps you need to allow the court system to complete the legal process before rendering judgment. Stop memorializing a criminal. Quote, "Now we are processing the threat to our democracy that occurred yesterday in our nation's Capitol. We witness white supremacy in action. It's about systemic racism," unquote. This is your personal perception and views. It is not your job to tell students what to think, but to teach them how to think. Parents teach their family values and morals, and if they believe systemic racism is in their lives, it is their decision to teach their children. Quote, "It is our job as educators to help our students process these events," unquote. No, this is the right and responsibility of parents. You are not the parents, and you do not know the emotional toll you might cause some very fragile child or teen. It is not your job to indoctrinate with your opinions and agendas. Quote, "Our social studies teachers and history buffs can help us get the facts straight," unquote. Reminder, courts have not yet had any final ruling on the events at the Capitol. Therefore, it is not your place to push your personal agenda. Quote, "Our important job is to create space for staff and students to process," unquote. No, it's the teacher's job to teach the curriculum in the classrooms, and school social workers and school psychologists are on staff to help students and families as needed. Quote, "We know the impact of yesterday's events in Washington, DC, and at the Minnesota Capitol in St. Paul is even more personal and hurtful for people of color," unquote. For your information, nothing happened at the Capitol then? Racism, again, your opinion, and not to be forced in the minds of children and teens. Also, Echo Park Elementary allowing the book Something Happened in Our Town to be read to 4th graders? Teaching to fear law enforcement? Officers come into the schools to take away any fears by interacting with the kids? In my opinion, this is an inappropriate book. I hope all parents are aware of this book and its content. This is what your topic of concern should be as a school district. Quote, "Some of our staff and students of color and others may need to take a break from regular work activity today. Let us all make space to do so," unquote. Really? Talk to them. Kids silly. They just want to be with their peers in the classroom, learning at their grade levels. Not to be given your opinions and personal agendas, and if staff members are so fragile that they need an extra break, perhaps they need some psychological help. If these decisions are based on skin color, this is clearly racism by definition, because racism is making decisions and/or judgments based on school color. Quote, "We can be reassured that our Congress did come together and affirm our democratic process, reestablishing hope for our future," unquote. Excuse me, unquote. Obviously, your political bias is showing through. This letter is actually propaganda. Also, this district should always be hyper-vigilant with any form of an indoctrination, all forms, and assure that children and teens are safe from any form of racism. And Comprehensive Sex Ed, House File 1414 Bill, co-authored by John Hewitt and Robert Bierman. So how many parents are aware of this potential of happening in our school district? This curriculum teaches children explicit sexual graphic instruction, exploration of gender identity, and how to keep your parents out of your decisions. In closing, I would like to say, knowing these facts, is a call to action for all parents to wake up and be forever vigilant of what is being taught in this or any school district, from CSE to racism, to school staff using personal opinions and agendas to indoctrinate students. You can choose to look the other way, but you cannot say you did not know. Because of all I shared this evening, you do now know. Thank Hitler. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela, for sharing your thoughts. Next, under open forum, we have two speakers. Open forum, you can sign up the day of the meeting as you walk in, and you're given two minutes to speak on a topic. Our first speaker is Kelly Mikey.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Kelly, and I'm a parent in 196. Thank you, Mary, Jackie, and Kate, for your message to district staff following the Capitol insurrection. Thank you for calling out white supremacy and systemic racism as present in our society and an important part of what keeps us all from living in an equitable community. White supremacy flows through our government judicial system, healthcare, and crosses all political lines. But many believe that the belly of the beast is in our U.S. education system. Yes, we need to talk about white supremacy culture, white privilege, and white fragility in schools, and equip our teachers for these conversations. But more often, we need to just listen. Listen and reflect on the role we individually play in both participating in and perpetuating white supremacy culture. And we need to make bold changes, which requires leadership that isn't afraid to be vulnerable and make mistakes and take accountability. We need to fight against fostering a white supremacy culture, which was epitomized by the attack on our U.S. Capitol. Within our education system, we must actively dismantle the culture of abuse and oppression, which benefits some while hurting others. We need to culturally, we need culturally responsive, anti-racist educators, and we need to publicly support them when they are attacked. We need more teachers of color and examine patterns of why we're not able to retain them. This is not a political conversation, but one based deeply in humanity and loving our neighbors as ourselves. So once again, thank you, Mary and team. Your message has been recognized with the intent of support for our children and those that care for our children of all races. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, for sharing your thoughts this evening. Our last speaker tonight, under open forum, is Amy Daly. Welcome, Amy.
Hi. So we've got my little girl over there, so I might have to dash, but I would follow up with the first two speakers, and I did see your email, and a lot of people have seen it, people of color, people of all races. And just to tell you what you might not just know, is that a lot of people are very upset by it, because it's just blanking a lot of people, including people of color, as racist. So what I would like to know, I was a teacher before I had children, and if I were to have received that overarching message that just talks about white supremacy as if people who have a different opinion than you are white supremacists, I wouldn't feel very welcome to work here. So I would like to know what you're going to do about it, because we're supposed to all be coming together? How are we supposed to come together with that?
Thank you, Amy, for sharing your thoughts. Thank you for sharing your thoughts with us this evening. We will get back to you if we can help, so thank you very much. Tonight, under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the January 11th, 2021, regular school board meeting. We have the minutes of the January 25th, 2021, special school board meeting. We have the minutes of the February 2nd, 2021, special school board meeting. We have gifts. We have grants. We have advertising. We have summaries of claims for December 2020. We have schedule of investments for December 2020. We have general fund revenues and expenditures report for November 2020. We have the treasurer's report for November 2020. We have personnel, we have employee agreement, Policy 713 and Procedure 713.1P, post-assurance debt compliance. We have student-teacher agreements, and we have pay rates for substitute, temporary, and part-time employees. That's the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda board members would like to pull this evening? Seeing none, wish of the board on the consent agenda.
Move to approve by Corey?
Second.
We have a motion by Corey, a second by Mike, to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion by Cory, a second by Mike, to approve the consent agenda as outlined. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, respond at the rule.
Inghamson?
Aye.
Albright?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Isaacs?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Magnusson?
Aye.
Rosine?
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda passes on a 7-0 vote. This evening, we'll move into items of report. Our report is Certificates of Participation Pre-Sell Report for Financing of Artificial Turf. And we've got Mark Stotts and Crew with him tonight.
And Crew. Thank you, Chair Magnusson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. As was mentioned, we're going to complete the final two schools in our turf projects. Last year, it was Rosemount and Egan High Schools. This year, it is both schools located in Apple Valley, both Apple Valley High School and Eastview High School. And I'm going to turn it over to Jody Zespa with Ellers and Associates, and she can make further introductions, and she'll present the information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and good evening.
Good evening, Jody.
So nice to be with you guys in person.
I know.
Yes, I think it's been on screen the last couple of times. So with me tonight is Matthew Hammer. He is the replacement for Joel Sutter. So Joel, who you knew for many years, worked at the district and was on the Ellers team and retired in August. So Matthew is the new member now of the Ellers team, so we wanted to get him out and introduce him to you, and you may be seeing him in the future then. So one of us will definitely be here as we go through the sale process, too. So with that, I will start with the beginning of the sale report, and then Matthew is going to cover the financing schedules. So I'll start with the first page, and are you seeing it okay, or do you need me to advance something from here, or do you guys see it on your?
I know this is going to be an exciting project to get started.
It is.
Because then people can actually see where the field is going to go and how it's going to lay out on the property and...
Yeah, and I think last year's fields turned out fantastic, right?
Yes.
So hopefully, you've been getting great feedback on those.
Well, the sad thing is that, you know, we didn't get a lot, haven't had a lot of games.
I know, I know. Hopefully, there's light at the end of the tunnel.
Yes.
I can just describe it, too, if that's, would you like me to?
You can go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I can do that.
Because we've all got it in front of us.
Yes. So I will just make some comments on each of the pages. So the first page talks about the purpose, which Mark just described, for the athletic turf fields. And then these certificates will have an annual appropriation clause as required by law. So you, so whoops, a little too far. So you'll see that, hmm, let's see if I can, how is this? There we go. So the purpose was at the top of the page there, and then the authority, this will have an annual appropriation clause as required by statute, so that you need to approve it each year as part of your budget. And then we'll have a call date on these certificates, just like we do with your bonds, so that will be April 1 of 2028, and we'll be able to refinance those if we have lower rates available to us at the time. You'll notice, just like the certificates that we did last year, your underlying rating on your general obligation debt right now is a AA1, which is a very nice high rating, just one notch lower than the AAA rating, that's the highest rating that Moody's assigns. This will be rated one notch down from that, so we're expecting to see a AA2 on the rating of these certificates, because of the annual appropriation clause and the fact that they're not general obligation debt.
Oh, okay.
And then you'll notice in the method of sale placement that we will solicit competitive bids again, just like we did last year. We don't get quite as many bids on certificates like we do on your bonds, but last year, we got three. We just issued certificates of participation at about the same dollar amount for Osseo School District, and we got two bids at really nice low rates. So just know, we probably aren't going to get quite as many bids for certificates, but we'll still hope to get nice low rates. We are expecting to see a premium bid on these certificates, and Matthew will talk about that when he gets to the financing schedules. And then you'll see that there are a number of different agreements that your bond attorney is drafting on your behalf as part of this financing, too. Next is the thing that I know Jackie will be very excited about. We are reviewing your existing debt, just like we always do, and we have a couple of opportunities for refunding. So we've been talking to Mark about those, and likely, we'll proceed with those about a year from now, so early in calendar year 2022. And it's looking like we'll save about a half a million dollars.
Wow.
So that's pretty exciting. So we're monitoring those closely, and we'll continue to keep in touch with you on those.
Good deal. That's why the board likes that stuff.
Yes.
Refinance it, then you save a million, half a million dollars.
Exactly. Okay, now we've lost again.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Suchan.
You said you're going to wait for a year to do that, but can you help us quickly understand why a year?
For sure. So if you wanted to proceed with refunding those now, you would have to issue those at taxable rates, because the call date is not until February 1 of 2022. So we are looking at that, and we think we can save a lot more by waiting. I think the consensus right now is that interest rates are going to stay at the nice low levels that they are at currently and maybe even go down a little bit. So with that being said, you're always going to save money, more money if you're able to issue the debt as tax-exempt rather than taxable rates. So if we can hold on and issue those with tax-exempt rates, we'll be a lot better off.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so then a couple of regulatory requirements there with continuing disclosure and arbitrage. You will have the opportunity to invest the certificate proceeds until you use the funds for the project costs, and so we have factored in a little bit of interest earnings related to the investment of your certificates. And then we have a little bit more information about the nonappropriation clause and the fact that that makes it a little bit more risky for investors. And then a list of the other service providers that we'll be working with in conjunction with this financing. So your bond counsel, Dorsey &amp; Whitney, paying agent is US Bank National Association, same as your certificates last year, and then the rating agency is Moody's. Next, we have a timeline related to the financing, and we're presenting the pre-sale report tonight. We'll be putting together the official statement and having a due diligence call with Mark and Christopher, along with a conference with Moody's Rating Agency. We'll distribute the official statement near the end of February, and then we're expecting to receive bids on the day of your March board meeting, and we'll be here to present those results that evening and close on the financing on April 1.
Wow.
So with that, I will let Matthew talk a little bit about the financial schedules.
Thank you, Jody. My name is Matthew Hammer, and I'm the newest member of the team, and I have the impossible task of filling Joel Sutter's shoes. So we've got a couple of schedules here that we'll quickly review. The initial schedule is our sources and uses schedule, and the main illustration here is that we're getting a deposit to your construction fund that meets the estimates that were provided by Mark, about a little bit over $9,400,000 of proceeds that will be deposited in your construction fund. Similar to the last issue that in April of 2020, we're assuming premium pricing in our estimates, which means it's typically, underwriters prefer this pricing when they go to provide bids on the sale of bonds. And right now, we're assuming a little bit over a $500,000 premium as we go into the estimates that we're seeing here with the certificates, or assuming we're going to get next month. The next schedule is our amortization schedule here, and we received a 1.97% interest rate back last April, which was outstanding. But we're assuming actually a better interest rate right now, so a little bit more than 1.4% is our initial estimate, and we still have some cushion built into that estimate. So we're looking for really good bids for the district as we move forward with the estimate and the sale next month. So with that, we can answer any questions folks have in regards to the pre-sale report.
Superboard members, any questions or comments? That's almost amazing, that is amazing, 1.4% interest rate. That's incredible.
Yeah, we're seeing historically low rates at this point in time, and we're anticipating some really good results when we go to sell the COPs.
Well, we'll look forward to having you back on the 8th, Matthew, and I know you'll do just wonderfully well, and maybe both of you will be back, or just you both. Thank you so much. I don't think there's any other questions or comments, and this is not an action item this evening. This is just for your information, and it'll be brought back on the 8th. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have no old business this evening. Under new business, we have Policy 204, and it relates to school board meetings. We'll call up Jill Coyle.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnusson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with new business, taking a look at Policy 204, school board meetings. So it's been a while since we've taken a look at this policy. It was last revised in 2015, and with some of the meeting format changes that we've encountered this year, courtesy of COVID-19, we thought it was time to do a little tune-up of this policy and see if there were some changes that could be made. And indeed, there were several changes, not just related to the electronic meeting that we're having tonight, but a variety of other things that needed some updating. I should preface my comments tonight by making the point that the Board Policy Review Committee did have an opportunity to look at this policy and the revisions we met in December and January, and so they have thoroughly vetted all of the changes before you tonight as new business. So I think what I'll do at this point is to walk you through, to briefly walk through some of the key changes in policy that's been proposed this evening. First, I'll mention the changes that were necessitated due to the meeting format brought on by the pandemic, and specifically, now we're holding electronic meetings, as are most government bodies in Minnesota. So the change to allow for electronic meetings is captured in Sections 2.5, 10.2, and 14. So Section 14 simply states the legal basis that's allowed under the open meeting law for holding an electronic meeting. Section 10.2 states that roll-call voting is required in electronic meetings, and Section 2.5 calls out the specific statute applicable to notice of electronic meetings. There's a few tricks in how we post notice for an electronic meeting. I should make the point that we have already, of course, been following all of these requirements in the open meeting law. We just wanted our policy to reflect what we're doing. Okay? Moving along, the second set of changes I'll mention tonight are two sections related to emergency meetings. These are found in Section 5 and Section 2.4, and they are also modeled after the statutory requirements applicable to emergency meetings. I should say that it's unlikely that the board will ever need an emergency meeting, knock on wood. I don't recall ever having one in this district. But we felt that it would be prudent to describe this type of meeting in the policy in the event that we ever should have the need to hold one. And to characterize the difference between a special meeting and emergency meeting, for a special meeting, you have to give three days' notice, posted notice. For an emergency meeting, you don't have time to post for three days. So it would be a meeting where you have to take action right away, can't wait out the three-day notice. Continuing along, the next set of proposed changes attempt to tidy up the sections on public comment, namely, the sections related to open forum, now proposed to be renamed limited open forum, as well as special communication requests and public comment on agenda items. These are the three ways that the public can comment at a board meeting. You'll find these proposed edits in Sections 8.4.5, 8.4.6, and Section 9. And what we tried to do here is to first broadly describe the various types of stakeholders who are eligible to present public comments, as well as to more clearly define the number of speakers for each of these sections of the agenda, to describe what happens if a speaker is out of order, and to make the statement that the views of public speakers do not necessarily represent the views of the school board. Moving on, we also added language to the policy stating that new items cannot be added to the agenda of a special meeting, and again, this is due to the unique posting requirements for special meetings. In Section 2.3, we added a provision allowing a person to file a written request to receive notice of special meetings, including specific subjects addressed at a special meeting, and this is modeled after a section in the open meeting law. And then finally, we made a series of technical changes, simply to better mirror the exact language found in the open meeting law in some sections, and also to correct references to the secretary to the school board, which now has the updated title, executive assistant to the superintendent and the school board, and of course, that's Callie Longendike. So this is a new business item tonight. It will come back for action in March, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
With that, it's probably hard to be able to form a question, but are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions and comments from board members? Suchan?
I just wanted to say thank you for putting this forth here. We got a chance to review it as part of our policy review committee, and so I appreciate all the input that you sought from everyone in this process. Thank you.
I just have one. Has it changed with the governor's orders of, you know, his broad orders? Have some of our rules that we follow under open meeting laws changed, or is that mostly because of Zoom?
Yeah. Excellent question. So what's interesting is the open meeting law always had a provision in it that allowed us to do an electronic meeting in the event of a pandemic. No one ever thought we'd have a pandemic that would require that to happen, but actually, we were well set up in Minnesota to move right into electronic meetings under that existing provision in the law. So what that requires is if there's a pandemic, a chief officer or even the school district's attorney can assert that there's a need to meet electronically, and the statute guides us on how to go about doing that.
Okay, so when we come back, when the pandemic is over, or we're more comfortable coming back, will we still have the requirement of zooming in or bringing in board members that might not be, or will they need to be physically present in the building?
Great question. So the idea of meeting electronically in the way that we are tonight and that we have been since the state of emergency was declared is under one provision of the open meeting law, which does require that there be a pandemic. There is a separate provision in the open meeting law that would also allow us to have an electronic meeting, even when there's not a pandemic, but there are some additional provisions that would apply. One that may make it not make so much sense is if we're doing it electronically, then members of the public have to be able to be present every place where there's a board member. So if a board member is doing it from his or her home, they would have to have it opened so a member of the public could be in that home as well. That's a different statute, not the one we're operating under now, but there is still a way to do electronic meetings, is the short answer to your question.
Interesting. The changes that you've made in here and the updates are really, really nice. They read well, they help me as far as, and anybody who's going to be running the meeting of what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think for the public to know, we're always interested in your input, but this is a meeting of the board in public, and we have things to do. I think sometimes people think they can come to a board meeting and drive our agenda, and that's not, that's simply not the case. So thank you for putting this together. Thank you to the policy review committee for looking at that, and that's Cory and Joel and Suchan, so thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll see this as an action item on March 8.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up this evening is the 2021-22 Capitol expenditure budget, and we're going to call up, we're going to call Christopher Onyem-Ongobroshap up, and good evening, Christopher.
Good evening, Chair Magnusson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, the public. Thanks for having me here. It's exciting, I think, to be talking about capital improvements. It's been a year where a lot of the things that we've wanted to do, it almost feels like the students have not gotten to enjoy that. But the K-5 kids are coming back in, and hopefully soon, the middle school, high schools are going to be showing up, and so then what we're going to be talking about tonight has to do with next year's capital budget. In the documents that were presented to the board, there are two things that we have. There's operating capital, and then the long-term facilities maintenance. This is a fast reading for these items. They will come back at the April 12 board meeting. Between now and then, there'll be some work that we're going to be doing in the building. Between now and then, there'll be some work that we're going to be doing in the building level, and then also trying to massage the items that have been presented here. So I'll just walk through this. I do not have a PowerPoint, because I felt I was basically regurgitating what has been, has been documented on here. So on the operating capital side, what we are starting with is there is a levy component and an aid component. And the document that was presented for the 2021-22 budget kind of gives you an estimate of where those revenue sources are going to be. So total, we're anticipating receiving $11.8 million. Again, there's a tax component and an aid component coming into that. We present a summary of items that we anticipate we're going to expand those dollars for. So administrative and instructional technology being a main one. We spent a lot of funds using the CRF funds, that's the COVID relief financing that came through from the feds, improving desk space so that students can meet in person with enough space. We also spent a lot of money in technology needs, making sure that all the students, as they are interacting over Zoom, have those devices. So those funds have already been, been expanded, but then this is just adding on to that piece. We also have bound instruments. So these are on a cycle. We want to make sure that the tubers are performing to the extent that they should be. And so we are, we are setting aside $150,000 for that. There are other curriculum and material adoption needs that are also included herein. And then there are some financing for lease pieces. So Matt Hammer, Jody Zasba just talked about our certificates of participation that's coming up for the next turf field. What is included here are the initial payments for the lease items that have already been purchased. So the turf fields at the Rosemont and Egan would be one item that would be fresh in the minds of everyone here. And then also for our lease levy, we'll lease levy for the ice arenas for all the buildings when they, hockey teams, when they use the ice arenas. We are allocating $1.2 million for the buildings. So this is their opportunity. We have an overall district plan. But within each building, there are some things that they want to nuance as to how they will better meet the needs of their students. So $1.2 million is allocated for that. Overall, we're anticipating that we're going to be spending $10.6 million. So we are budgeting to have reserves of $1.2 million on the operating capital side. The long-term facilities maintenance revenue, again, has an aid and a levy component. For FY '22, we are anticipating that breakdown to be about $4 million in aid, and then the rest of it, $8 million coming in on the levy side. There are adjustments that, based on student populations and then prior year adjustments that the Department of Ed does, some of those numbers get tweaked during the levy process. So we're anticipating for the coming year, total revenues, including fund balance from prior years, $12.1 million. We spend the long-term facilities revenue on maintaining the buildings, making sure that there is ample slanting space, and it is conducive to the needs of our students. The roofs are not leaking. If there are any health and safety concerns, those items are addressed here. So again, there's a list of, in broad areas, what those items are going to be for the coming year. We're anticipating that we will spend $11.9 million. So again, a reserve of about $200,000 in the long-term facilities maintenance side. Between now and April, as I, as I stated, we're going to have the buildings walk through their needs within, within their specific areas. They're going to then come up with specific plans. And what we anticipate doing is, on the April 12th meeting, we will have a bound budget book, which we will be presenting. That will detail out all the items that I have summarized here. Again, this is the fast reading. If there are any broad items that I've gone over that need clarifications, I'll gladly address those now.
Perfect. With that, I'll ask if there are any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members? As we look at the broad overview that we're going to vote on March 8th, and then Christopher will bring us more stuff, or more things, April 12th. So if you have any questions between now and our next board meeting, you can direct them to Christopher, and there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice job, Christopher. We're moving on to other action items this evening. Our other action item is, guess who? Chris McDonald! And the National Speech Debate Education Day. We are so glad you came tonight, and congratulations.
Did, did you miss me?
I did.
I promised you I'd be back. And here we are, at the end of the meeting, or towards the end of the meeting, and I'm back again.
I'm still trying to figure out how kids really thrive and survive having speech and debate on Zoom.
Well, we're going to talk a little bit about that in the presentation, and then, and it might actually generate some questions about what it is we've done. But today, we're here for the proclamation honoring National Speech and Debate Education Day. I believe that this is the third year we have, in District 196 and across the country, participated in this process. I'd like to thank all of the District 196 school board members, as well as Chairperson Jackie Magnuson and Superintendent Mary Krieger, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the proclamation celebrating National Speech and Debate Education Day. District 196 has been a true leader in the area of speech and debate education throughout the years, whether that is in the classroom, or the co-curricular and extracurricular competitions that help our students hone their critical thinking and presentational skills. This past year has proven especially challenging, as we had to seek to develop ways to allow students the ability to participate while also following all of the necessary precautions a pandemic asks of us. Last spring, when the nation moved to social distancing and distance learning, the speech and debate community immediately set about trying to design a system that would afford us the ability to successfully hold competitions, all while keeping our students, coaches, judges, and tournament staff safe and healthy. Because platforms like Zoom had already been developed, we tapped into this and turned our real-world spaces into virtual ones, so that students everywhere could continue to compete online and have their voices heard. While it isn't the same thing as in-person competition, it has been a saving grace for so many of our students who felt that they wouldn't be able to continue doing the activities they loved. Throughout the year, we worked continually to improve our online coordination of these activities so that we could successfully hold the 120th Annual Minnesota State High School League's State Debate Tournament. With the efforts of many people in the community, we not only succeeded in holding the tournament, but also in providing a successful awards program all online for our students. So today, I come before the school board to ask for your support of the 2021 proclamation celebrating National Speech and Debate Education Day. District 196 continues to be a leader here in Minnesota, as well as the nation, teaching and developing needed communication skills to help an ever-changing world. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was an interesting experiment in all of this. So last spring, I kind of explained where we were at. And some of you know that last spring, I was coming out of treatment for cancer. And in the midst of all of that, I was still coaching my team, and still coming to work, and doing all of those things, and then the COVID hit. And we had to come up with a means in order for us to have these tournaments, because we believe so much in allowing our students to have their voices heard and to perform, because it's a necessary element for their mental health as well as their education. So we looked at Zoom, and we created a system that allowed us to sort of overlay a virtual set of rooms within it, so that when you walked into your computer, it looked like you were walking into a map of a school, with school room numbers and all of that. And so, Ms. Magnuson, you were going to go debate in Room 101. And you would look at your screen, find Room 101, and click on it, and it would immediately open that room and that room only. So then you, and your opponent, and the judge would be in that room, in that virtual space. So we created all of that. Were able to successfully hold the National Tournament of Champions utilizing that system, as well as the National Speech and Debate Association's National Tournament in June. But over the summer, we started looking at costs and started looking at ways to trim the costs of what we were doing. Zoom is a great tool, but when you get into executive-level access to Zoom, it becomes really prohibitively expensive. Turns out that Eight by Eight, which is a company that primarily has, as one of its products, Gitsi, which is another form of online Zoom, Zoom-type or virtual room software, that they actually provide pretty much free of cost. I've, we have a community member who works for Microsoft, who is really good with those things, and was able to actually develop that system in Minnesota. So in Minnesota, throughout the entire debate season, we were able to use those at fairly minimal to no cost. So we were able to put this together and to make it work. So then Amy Doherty at the State High School League and I worked really closely together to see if we could make sure that 2021 would not be the first time that the state debate tournament did not take place. And it had already gotten through one pandemic, and it's going to get through another one. And it did. And we successfully hosted the state tournament. Hundreds of students were able to participate and/or watch. We livestreamed the semifinals and the final rounds. We livestreamed the award ceremony, and it felt like they were at a real tournament. There was a Zoom room for them to hang out with their friends in, to play games. There was a Zoom room for our judges to hang out and talk and be collegial with one another. We did everything we could, and we believe that it's that important that we were able to overcome those obstacles. Much like all of you last year, when you were presented with the obstacles of how are we going to give education? How are we going to bring that education to our students? You did not blink. You did not say, "Why us?" You got busy and you got it done. And just like that, the debate and speech community did the same thing. And so we thank you for showing us that it was possible to do this, and to afford them the opportunity. And all of the students, thank you, I know they do, for making certain that they could do these things.
Chris, do you see the State High School League, or even Eagan High School, or the state, is continuing to use some of the features of Zoom in lieu of some of the live? I mean, as we move forward, and like next year, when we're done with the pandemic? Or do you see them moving back to more live?
I think we're talking on a national scale about continuing to incorporate these types of avenues, because they do solve some of our inclusion problems.
Oh.
Because travel is expensive, and it's time-consuming, and it does take away those times. And so being able to zoom into a particular tournament, like we were able to participate in tournaments this year that we would normally travel to in New York and in, this weekend is the Harvard Debate Tournament that we annually go to. And this weekend, my students will be competing at the Harvard Debate Tournament and Speech Tournament, but they'll be here, in their homes, on their cameras, in front of their computers, competing against the best competition in the country without having to leave. So some of those elements will probably stay true to form. But it is our hope that when this pandemic is over, and we know it will be someday, that we can go back to in-person, because that socialization, that ability to be with your friends on the weekends, to communicate and to just have fun with them and to be with them is so important, that I just don't think we're willing to give that up just because we found a method in order to do so. Much like I do not believe that even though we have found a method to educate students through digital format, that any of us believe that we do not wish to be back in person, live and together, and engaging one another in the conversations that are necessary for us to progress as a society.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Now Michael gets to follow me.
With that, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve March 5th, 2021, as National Speech and Debate Education Day. Move approval by Craig.
Second.
Second by Mike. We have a motion by Craig, a second by Mike, to approve National Speech and Debate Education Day as March 5th, 2021. All in favor indicate by saying aye at the roll.
Aye.
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 Colson?
Aye.
Higginson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Magnuson?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That passes on a 7-0 vote. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. We are so glad that you are here with us this evening, and thank you so much to all of the speech and debate people in the district. Thank you. Our next item on our other action items this evening is the Native American Parent Advisory Committee, our NAIPAC, and this is the resolution of concurrence. We have Michael Balsani, Director of Secondary Education, Francesca Elzini, and she is our para in the, or a CLA in our district?
CFA.
CFA. Ah geez, I knew I had one letter wrong, and I was like, and Nicole Lontree. Welcome.
Well, good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. It's a great honor to be here tonight, and we would like to do a few things. This is part of an annual compliance document that we'll present to you. But really, it's a program update of our Indian ed program throughout the year. So we'll give you some of the highlights, the activities. You'll see some great photos. And we also have our vote, our annual vote of concurrence. And so we'll do both of those tonight. And speaking will be Francesca Elzini, who is a CFA, and Nicole Lontree-Brovold, who is our chairperson for NAIPAC. And before we start, I would like to put, I'll put up on the screen, if I could, the PowerPoint. Perfect. Okay. Thank you so much, Kelly.
Beautiful.
This is actually a former student of mine. This is Sabria, who is performing at South of the River Powwow a couple of years ago. And before we would be, before we begin, I'd love to introduce our staff. Francesca Elzini is behind me, and will be speaking here in just a few minutes. Georgia Valandra is also a CFA, and she's here in the audience as well. And then not able to join us tonight is Fonda Smith, Lisa Turgeon, and Megan Bard-Pankow. And they're part of our staff as well. It's also my honor to introduce our NAIPAC board members. We have Nicole Lontree-Brovold behind me, speaking here tonight. We also have Austin Corbine, who is our vice chair. He's with us. And Mark Lontree is our MDE at large. He's in the, the audience as well, not able to join us. But part of the group is Danielle Goodwin, Katie Colson, Keely Corbine, and Sequoia Jarski. And so the NAIPAC board meets approximately once a month. They manage a state program and a federal program, and also work very closely with our Indian education staff to provide services and programming for our American Indian students. And with that, I will bring up Francesca Elzini to talk to you about our program review. And she'll get started with academic programming.
Hello, I'm Francesca Elzini, Culture Family Advocate. I come from the White Earth Reservation. And we're speaking about the academic programming and virtual programming. FASA and Scholarship Night, we had 18 participants review updates of the FASA with Julie Krieger, review of the Native American-specific scholarships. For the ACT prep classes, we have six participants in our class, weekly classes from January to March. Academic Coaching: Many Roads to Success, Ninth Grade Workshop, weekly ninth-grade leadership mentorship groups. In middle school, we have a math outreach. For the campus visit series, we had 21 participants, all virtual. Minnesota State University, Mankato, University of Minnesota Twin Cities, and Fond du Lac Tribal Community College. High school, we have Apple Valley High School Native American student leaders. For middle school, we have learning from the Ojibwe, the seven teachings, which is the seven grandfather teachings that we're doing for the whole year. And that's for middle school and elementary. We have 34 participants in six middle schools that are partaking in the seven grandfather teachings. Weekly, What's Up Wednesday, Social Hour, Care Packaging, and we're going to be doing a pizza night to try to get other students engaged within the program. Elementary, there's, going back into the seven teaching, Book Club, CSO. We work with CSO, and we have, we're doing virtual reading books of Dakota and Ojibwe in there. We have 40 students participating from 16 different elementary schools. Monthly craft activities that I do mailouts. So there's me and my other coworker that we coincide different mailouts to elementary, and then we're starting to do it for the middle school too. And then like, we'll be doing high school also within that, going into the graduation series. Right now, we have the Youth Ski Club. It's an in-person program. It's nine elementary and one middle school. We're collaborating with the Minnesota Youth Ski Club, our Ski League, and Kyle Schwartzing from Glacier Hills Elementary. And we have a parent question, Q&amp;A, September 1st, 2020. We had 11 parents that attended. For the family programming, October 2nd, we had our first in-person family welcome-back event, which was very, it was very successful. We had 98 participants, which was 27 families. We had the Goodberry with Hope Flanagan attend. The Three Sisters Gardening with Shamira Caddo. We had a take-home craft activity, parent survey, programming updates. We had a book and backpack, school supplies distribution. We had a book and backpack, school supplies distribution that we had donated to the program. And the backpacks were filled with school supplies for all the children that needed them. We had hand sanitizer and face masks that were provided since we're all supposed to be wearing them at all times. We're trying to encourage everybody to... December 9th, 2020, we had the Family Math Night, and that was a virtual event. 19 participants, 11 families, was facilitated by District 196 math coaches, Heidi Clenden... How do you say her name? Clending? Clending and Rebecca Bain. Fun with math in home, scavenger hunts, card and dice games. We had math storytelling, Ojibwe moment in Dakota, counting. December 18th, we had the Winter Drive-Thru Event. We had 42 households members attend. We had it right over at the District Service Center. We had blankets, 150 blankets distributed, hat and mittens program that I work with also donated. We had 71 children size and 108 children's size distributed. The medicine wheel, which I do, I have it in the bag, but we, I'll just keep on going through that. We, I coincided with the Seven Grandfathers teachings. I'm trying to incorporate all of the teachings with each event that we do have. We gave out these lesson plans of the medicine shell, and we have the four medicines, which is the sage, sweetgrass, cedar, and tobacco that was distributed. And we teach about each meaning of it to all the families, still incorporating all of the lesson plans in that. We'll have our little demonstration. I'll keep on going through. We also had a take-home craft activity, and we also distributed student snacks because within our community and stuff, we always have like kind of a social gathering. It's really popular within our culture and stuff. So in a lot of our families, that's how we engage with our families of social gatherings and just coming together as a community. So, and this is, if you just look at these little things, these are medicines here that we gave as one of the teachings as part of our program. Family cultural teachings, I guess that's kind of like more of my, I'm a Culture Family Advocate, but also the Culture Coordinator where I, this is where I, all my little activities come in. On October 2020, we had the corn husks dolls. So if you see right here, these are some of our corn husks dolls that some of our kids made here. And we coincided that with the Three Sisters programming with the first event. These, we had 26 participants. These are all traditional corn husks dolls that we made for the program, and it was our first in-person event during the school year. November 20th, we had the faceless dolls, which is going into these ones here where it's all leather. And then this was, this is a middle school and high school one, and then this was elementary level. So it's easier to work with here. And that was the live Zoom one, so that was all new to our programming. So I have to like kind of revert all of our programming into where we had the big events with, you know, in-person events, but we have to like kind of revert it back to how can we get these out to the families? So we do a lot of the drive-through events and mailouts and stuff. And to some certain points, we also drive it to the families that don't have transportation. Plans for the spring, or hang on, January 20th, we had the mini hand drums. We had 53 participants. We are still in the process of doing the Zoom class for that one. Plans for the spring 2021, we're doing the double ball stick game, the deer toe game, hand rattles, and hand drums. For the early childhood learning kits, we distributed to 40 houses, target students current that are third, that are three and four-year-old children within the district here. Goals: Introduction to the District 196 American Indian Education Staff and Programming Options, Promoting and Strategizing for Kindergarten Readiness, Early Childhood Screening, Collaborating with Megan Perschenka and Kristi Digoe to determine content of the kits. Effort was requested by the Native American Parent Advisory Committee. Kits included the Welcome Pack, Writing and Fine Motorskill Tools, Fry Bread, the book, Native American Story by Kevin Noble-Mellord, and the Fond du Lac Tribal Headstarts Board Book. And there's some little pictures of what we distributed on the bottom. American Indian Education Letter is requested by the NAIPAC board, which is very popular this year. It's emailed district-wide each month, available on the Indian Education website. October, we had the Cultural Appropriation. November was Native American Heritage Month. December was the Dakota Oyate, and January is Anishnabe. February is Savantee. March will be the Sugar Bush. April Indigenous Artist Spotlight in Watsupi. In May, Nimiwin is a Powotail. And this is, anybody can look that up. We send it out to a lot of the teachers with requests. It has a lot of links and stuff that they can also learn within their lesson plans that they can incorporate into their teachings. Looking ahead for virtual events, Family Literacy Night, Story Night Telling with Hope Flanagan, which is February 24th, that's just coming up. Early Childhood Series, March through May, Native American Family STEM Night, which is in April, and the Title VI Public Hearing is in April also. Community cultural events, South of the River Powell is still kind of a toss-up, but we are looking into something, doing something personal just within our district here if it is approved and to the governor's orders and stuff, if we can have in-person events but social distancing. And then we have the graduation honoring, which would be kind of incorporated into that. So we're in the process of planning that right now. And Meekwich, and this is some of our families. This is our welcome-back event that we incorporated the Three Sisters, and we introduced the Seven Grandfathers teachings.
Thank you so much, Francesca. Next, I'd like to bring up our NAIPAC chairperson and co-chair, so Nicole Launtry-Brovold will come up, and Austin Corbine.
Hello, I'm Nicole Launtry-Brovold, and I am the Chair of the NAIPAC Committee. I'm an enrolled member of the Ho-Chunk Nation, and I have three kids in the district, and I also graduated from Eagan High School.
Hi, I'm Austin Corbine. I've been in district since 2003. I'm an enrolled member from Bad River Indian Reservation, Wisconsin. My daughter is Keely, who is a ninth grade at Eagan High School.
So each year, it is our job as the NAIPAC board to do a vote of concurrence. And so I'm going to go over how our vote went this year. So here's a little bit of the background on the vote of concurrence. There is an option to vote non-concurrent, but I'm happy to say that we did not do that. We voted for concurrence this year. And each year, the parent committee looks at the work that the school district is doing for our American Indian students. And last year, when we came in front of the board, we had four recommendations that we wanted followed up throughout this school year. And I have to say that as a board, we are very happy with our recommendations being met this past school year, especially in the middle of a pandemic. And so a couple of things that we discussed at our meeting was how is the district meeting the needs of American Indian students, the progress of our recommendations, and then our future goals and recommendations for this upcoming school year. So we, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, issued a vote of concurrence. We attest that the school board and our district are compliant with the Minnesota statutes, and the school board and our district are meeting the needs of American Indian students in District 196. So last year, our, oh, nope, that's not last year. This is this year. But some of these are continuing because we've seen such great progress within the district and the work that is being done. So we would like to see the continued effort of the increasing the American Indian staff throughout the district to include, but not limited to, more American Indian teachers, paras, cultural family advocates, administrators, social workers, and guidance counselors. And I'm not sure how many people know that we grew quite a bit with our American Indian staff this year. I believe we're up to 19, right? 19 staff?
19 teaching staff.
19 teaching staff of American Indians in the district. We would also like to see an Indian Education Coordinator being hired through the district. We currently have three full-time employees and one part-time employee, and we feel that a coordinated position is important to the program, and it would be beneficial to our students. We want to see the continued efforts to provide district educators information and training on Native American history and culture, provide trainings on how to teach Native American curriculum in their classrooms, and give them the tools to be successful in the classroom. And like Francesca had mentioned earlier, the newsletters were an idea that we came up with last year, and we're really happy with how successful they've been. So we want to continue our efforts with those, and then also throughout our Indian Ed curriculum, we want to make sure that that's available for educators. And then the last recommendation is regarding our Dakota land acknowledgement. And we would like the school district to begin using our Dakota land acknowledgement statement throughout the district to stand in solidarity with our indigenous nations and community. We want to honor our indigenous ancestors who have come before us and show support to our indigenous communities that are still here today. And this is a work in progress, and we haven't quite come up with how we want to incorporate it, but we will come back with our ideas.
We want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and we can take any comments or questions you might have about this program or the vote of concurrence at this time.
Board members, questions and comments? Sachin?
Thank you. This is so wonderful, what a wonderful update. So thank you for sharing that. You know, it wasn't that long ago, we got a chance to see some academic progress that's been happening amongst our various student groups. And I and many others here were just so amazed to see the incredible leaps that our American Indian students have made. And I know it's a small group, and there are all these caveats, but all of that aside, it's a good story, and I want to commend you on that. And there's so much that you're also doing to help set, chart the path for others to learn from this as well. So thank you also for that leadership that you're giving to all students in our district.
It is amazing, the work that your committee has done, the work that you have done, the CFAs have done, the work that everyone has done is just totally amazing. What, how many, how many, Michael, how many new teachers of Native, of indigenous people did we hire this year? Eight?
We hired, yeah, eight additional teachers. We had 11 prior to this year, and I'm not sure where that feedback's coming from. We had, I'll stand here. We had 11 prior to this. We have 19 now, and that doesn't include other staff members. As Nicole mentioned, that's a goal of ours, so we'll collect that data as well and try to improve on that as well.
And as Sachin said, you know, helping your own students, but also helping all students understand and sharing that native culture is amazing. So thank you so much. Yes.
I just want to say too, thank you all for being here, and thank you for your leadership because I think what you've really hit upon is just, you have really shown how you can make a lot of progress by being together, working closely together, figuring things out, and really, you all have our kids at the heart of the work that you're doing. So being able to see that it makes a difference is just a great story, and we appreciate all you do and your leadership. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments? No? Okay. Before us, we have the Native American Advisory Committee Resolution of Concurrence. I will take a motion in a second to approve the letter of concurrence.
Moved by Sachin.
Second by Corey.
A motion by Sachin, a second by Corey to approve the letter of concurrence. All in favor indicate your support at the roll.
Abramson?
Aye.
Albrecht?
Aye.
Colson?
Aye.
Isaacs?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
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 Thank you. That passes on a 7-0 vote, and I hope it won't be a year before we see you again. I want to come to, when we get back into live meetings, then we, then we can make sure you invite us.
You're welcome, and Oliver.
Thank you. With that, we've come to the part of the board, a board meeting where we have board members and superintendent updates. Board members with items they'd like to report this evening. Sachin?
Oliver, others to go first, I was talking. I just wanted to acknowledge without reservation Jackie, Mary, and Kate for your leadership and courage to send this letter out. I want to thank you all for it. You know, sometimes it takes courage, it takes a leap of faith, and I just want to acknowledge publicly that I am very grateful and thankful for your support.
Any other board members with items they'd like to report?
I have something. It's cold. It's, we're part-time in school and part-time not. Go online or dig through and find your Community Ed brochure and do something with Community Ed. My granddaughter, who is five, said this was the best day of her whole life because they did the daddy and daughter evening together virtual party with winter bell. And, and this is through our South of the River Consortium. They got a box of stuff that had a corsage, it had stuff to set the table, crafts and activities that you could do. They got all dressed up, they had a wonderful time, and they danced, and they were silly. And my, like my son, my five-year-old granddaughter said, "It was the best day, Grandma, of my whole life." So make, did the best day of your kid's life, find something on Community Ed and have fun because it's cold and we, it's hard to be outside. So thank you to Community Ed for all that, all the things that they do, and congratulations to them.
We'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. As mentioned by speakers earlier this evening, I want to briefly address a message that I sent to District 196 staff on January 7th, the day following the insurrection at the Capitol. The purpose of the message was to help our staff create space for each other and students who needed to process the events of the previous day. We heard from many people outside of our district and some staff who were offended by that message. Importantly, we also heard from many staff members who appreciated the message and found it helpful in dealing with the emotions of themselves and the emotions of their students that day. Once again, we find ourselves in the middle of the highly polarized opinions and viewpoints expressed often on social media while we are working to meet the needs of all of our students. I want to assure the community that the administration and school board remain absolutely committed to each and every student and staff member in this district. We have a shared interest to provide exceptional education for all of our more than 29,000 students in District 196. And lastly, I want to end tonight's meeting with a very positive update on the return of students to our schools in person. Following the governor's revision to the Safe Learning Plan, our youngest learners in pre-kindergarten through second grade returned to full in-person learning late last month, and students in grades three through five returned last week. Last week, our board also voted to allow our middle school and high school students to return to in-person learning two days a week in the hybrid model. Students in grade six through 11 will start in the hybrid model on Monday, February 22nd, and students in grade 12 are scheduled to come back in hybrid on Monday, March 8th. We wanted to have all of our high school students return to the hybrid on February 22nd, but the state guidance limits us to three grades at a time with two weeks in between. So I've had the opportunity to visit our elementary schools since they have returned to in-person learning. You can literally feel the joy in school. The smiles of our students are easily seen even with their masks on. We're grateful for our incredible teachers, staff, and administrators who are dedicated to doing all they can so that our students are able to be in school in person. And thank you to our community for keeping our case rates low. Stay safe, everyone.
Congratulations to everyone. We are at the end of our meeting this evening. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is March 8th. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn by Craig, a second by Mike. Indicate your support at the roll.
Abramson?
Aye.
Albrecht?
Aye.
Colson?
Aye.
Isaacs?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Angusson?
Aye.
And Rosine?
Aye.
That passes on a 7-0 vote. Like I said, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is March 8th. Thank you and good night. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.